If I get up abruptly, the room's spinning. I have work to go. So I'm try- I'm on meds and I was in the hospital and my blood pressure has got high and blah, blah, blah. But if I get up, I'm gonna just say, can I please be excused for a second? I'll just go.
Yeah. Oh, that's terrible.
Mm-hmm.
Have you dealt with that before?
Yep, new, a new adventure.
Oh, gosh. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, you never know.
Hello?
I'm Elaine.
Greg Turner.
So nice to meet you.
So have you met Joyce before or no?
Yes, I have met Joyce.
And he has a talk.
Yes, um, we actually, I sat in, um, on a few of the charter revisions. Uh, when she headed that up.
Oh, I went through that one. When she was working on it.
Or not, yeah, well, that was not when she was.
You and your dad need to sit around and wait till Sergeant Shutey get here tonight. They have something for you guys. They've been trying to catch your dad at home and they haven't been able to catch him.
For me and my dad?
Mm-hmm, from the police, uh, union.
From the police union.
For your mom.
Oh, I'm like.
You didn't do anything wrong.
I could not tonight.
Sorry, Brendan.
I'm very low.
You don't wanna do a DUI check right now, do you?
So just sit out here for a second?
No, 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 he's, they're on patrol. I sent him an email because he was wanting to know. He has, he's been listening to your dad. He's been trying to catch him. And he wanted to know if he's gonna be at the meeting and I said, I assume he is. So I just wanted to give you heads up for you two of you to kinda, if you can, until you see him.
Okay.
Like I said, I just sent him an email telling those you're here tonight.
Yeah.
So I'm on methamphetamine. I've taken two dosage of that. I'm gonna take another one. But I'm still having a lot of pressure.
Yeah.
People's DA. Pressure and things have to be done and.
Yep, it is.
It's very stressful.
Yeah.
Brendan, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so Joyce last week was up here. I don't know if you came in late or if she introduced her. Well, whether you knew Joyce or not.
Oh, I, yeah, I did from, uh, I wasn't on council when she was mayor. I did, yeah, I enjoyed it, so.
I have an idea.
So she's, you know, acting all over the world, but she's on vacation.
Right.
Yep. Twenty six.
I read some people last week.
Do you need a printout with flyer? At a time?
I've got the two reservations that if they should come.
Yep, let me, I'll put it there for your signature. Yeah. Yeah, let me print it.
Uh, you can sign them down because I doubt very seriously that they're going to. It's the two yellow ones. The green ones are for the mayor. Yeah, those are just, uh, formalities for the, um, county auditors.
Yeah, one was, uh, one, uh, one was, uh.
This is, well, this is an insurance renewal and the other one is the rates and amounts that we have to do with the, uh.
Yeah, I thought one was.
Yeah, you, no, no, do those two.
Oh, I thought you said the, oh, the other.
Yellow, yeah.
Right month, right month over. So I don't need to do it on behalf of you.
No.
Yeah, one year I bought it and they were, uh, I think it was Federals doing, uh, pink shot, uh, shotgun shells for raising bre- raising breast cancer. So yeah, I did a picture of me with my shotgun here and a bunch of pink. Yeah, I think I even put up like real men shooting, shoot, uh, pink shotgun shell. It's a long month. We have one more meeting. In the month, maybe. I'm, I'm, I'm doing my countdown. At a convent. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, my girlfriend gets, man, she's got, she's had Bengal season tickets for five or six years and the first game was a, you know, wear or open in orange. I, I have like a plain orange tee shirt. She made me wear that cause, uh, there, I'm like, it's like, well, I got orange in my Bengals hat, but, and then this Sunday is, uh, that stri- you know, striping the stadium in our section is orange, but she bought, yeah, she, she bought me a, uh, actual Bengal shirt that's all orange. I've got Bengal shirts, but I'm, I'm like, I'm like, look at my closet. There's like, what bright colors do you see in here? Oh, no, he's out. He might be out the whole season. The tur- yeah, I mean, it was the ligament damage and the turf toe and, and it was just the toe. Yeah, I mean, it was ligament. I mean, that's what turf toe is.
And then here are small ones. Um, I didn't know if for, uh, cause you guys were gonna do the open house on Tuesday, right? So let me know what else you need printed for that.
What I need, Jack, Jack had, uh, East Park. Paper like this from East Park. He has, he has the file.
He has a very large file. Um, what did it have on it?
It's just a card.
Like, was it an aerial of it or was it just explanation? Okay.
And where it was at.
Okay.
It was on, it was.
Okay, I will look for.
Tene, Tene Beach.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll pass them out. We'll put these out too.
Okay.
Cause you know, this is, this is a lot of fun. Even if it's a mess, it's all.
Right? Who's this imposter? How are you? Good, how are you? It is.
This is it.
This is it. I know, that's what I said.
Yeah, you know, you know, the last interim city manager sitting in was open carrying, so just saying, you could've gotten away with it.
Elaine, I'm gonna just pass this.
Did I?
Um, you may have gotten the same thing or something similar, but
I think this is just.
I don't know if that's ever, you know, you might wanna pass it around.
Okay.
I, can we all get it?
Yeah.
I've always, I see them at places.
Oh, just you, oh, oh.
I do think they would.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You know, it just kinda depends on the.
Yeah, I was wondering, I'm looking at it, I'm like, is there? Well, I think, yeah, it's like, is there more? It looked like the same.
Yeah, that's it, yep. Um, she said she was running late, caught in traffic, right, Kevin? Cause that's where she's coming from is Columbus. Marking back and just reading, you know, just jacked that head. I was just.
Exactly.
Although, I wouldn't be out here in my big mouth.
Because sometimes I, if we start with the clown show tonight, and it should, should have sent me, I'm sorry, but.
Somebody actually knows what they're doing.
Where's, uh? Is Kenny not coming? He didn't say otherwise, maybe he's just late for.
Oh, we can start.
Um, I think she went to the restroom real quick. Driving from Columbus, that, that happens.
Anything for executives?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, we'll call our workshop to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Henning? Gorman? Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Bachman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. Okay, um, we're gonna ask Jacqueline Lewis to come up to the podium. And she is, um, with the law firm, uh, Bricker Grayden. And she's gonna, um, talk to us and educate us on the TIFs and the CRAs.
That's right. So good evening, council members and council president, mayor. Um, as the mayor mentioned, my name is Jacqueline Lewis and I'm a partner in Bricker Grayden's Public Finance Group. Um, I work with my colleague, Price Finley, uh, the name of which some of you may know. Uh, he's worked with your city for quite some time and, um, and so I am here this evening really to educate, to be a resource and answer questions that the council might have about various incentives. Um, as you guys all can imagine, incentives are extremely popular, have been for a while. But I would say in the last few years, they've really become popular in light of a lot of the development going on around the state. Um, in particular in housing, we see a lot of incentives. Uh, developers who historically haven't even worked with incentives. Curious to know how they can use those in their capital stacks to support a development. Um, and so the interest has picked up, um, across the state. And so this is a, a portion of our practice at Bricker Grayden that we specialize in. I am a public finance attorney by trade, so I work with political subdivisions on municipal bond financings. But I also work in our economic development space on incentives. So again, here to be collaborative, uh, and I really want you to ask questions and, and get answers to whatever you wanna know. Okay, so with that, we'll get into the presentation. Okay, so how do municipalities encourage growth? Obviously, you have access to, uh, building or, um, increasing revenue through a variety of different tax options. Of course, you have your income tax. Uh, you also have your property tax. Of course, school districts primarily rely on property tax and get the lion's share of their revenue from property tax. But in the incentive space, property tax is the biggest player. Uh, and then you also have the ability to levy special assessments, which are essentially not a tax. It's not coming from your income tax. It's not coming from your property tax. It's an entirely new revenue stream. And so why use these different incentives? Obviously, to encourage development or redevelopment within your communities. Um, also to encourage the maintenance of any existing development. Every community across Ohio is different and so the development needs of that community are different. But all of the incentives can be used to support whatever type of development your particular city wants to see come to fruition. And so what we like to do in the legal space is help communities identify how these programs can be used um, in a proactive way by communities to support the type of development you want to see. And so with incentives, they really kind of fall into three different buckets. You have those that abate existing taxes. An example of that would be the community reinvestment area or CRA. You have, uh, those programs that redirect tax. Tax increment financing is a popular example of that. And then you have those that essentially add a tax. I mentioned special assessment on the previous slide. You also have, uh, new community authorities. How many of you have heard of new community authorities?
We have.
You do, okay, so you've heard of it, Kevin. Um, and I mentioned that one or emphasized that one because, um, that is probably one of the newest tools. On this slide, special assessments are really the oldest. Um, but NCA's, we really see picking up popularity, uh, because they, they basically get outside of your tax base altogether. And so we'll get into that a bit here in the presentation. So how do school districts typically respond? I mentioned school districts in particular because the interplay between municipalities and school districts is, is really at the crux of economic development. And that's because, as I mentioned on one of the previous slides, with respect to incentives, property tax is really the biggest player. And of course, school districts rely heavily on property tax for their revenue sources. And so we also represent a ton of K through twelve school districts. Um, and so what we, what we see with school districts is you have those that fall into one of three different buckets. You have school districts that take a very reactive approach to incentives. So they don't really have anything in place that's standard. They essentially wait and see what development comes to them and then they figure out what they wanna do and how they wanna proceed with respect to that particular development. You also have districts that take what I call a proactive approach in that they understand that these incentives exist, that they're out there, that developers will be coming and potentially want access to them. And so they, they decide on the front end how they want to use them with respect to, uh, their particular communities. And I think that's a pretty good, uh, approach because it allows them to kinda get in front of a development and be proactive and collaborate with their other local government players like the city. And then you also have, uh, school districts that take a very objective approach, establishing policies on the front end. They don't make, they don't have much wiggle room with respect to different projects that might, might come to them. They have a policy and that's pretty much what they, what they stand on. Okay, so getting into some of the different types of incentives, of course, we can't cover all of them tonight, but I've picked out for each category of incentive, uh, a popular tool within that bucket. And so the first we're gonna be talking about is the community reinvestment area or the CRA. As I mentioned previously, CRA is an abatement of taxes. So it's a, it's a property tax related incentive and it essentially abates those taxes. Uh, what ta- taxes does it abate? It does not abate the base value. So if you have real property, whether it's bare or whether you have a, a, a facility on that property, that's the pre-existing base value. The CRA does not apply to that base value. It would abate whatever the improvement value is on a particular development. What are some of the required characteristics of any parcel that might go into a COA, CRA? Well, you have to have housing facilities or structures of historical significance. You have to have new construction and repair of existing facilities that's been lacking or discouraged in that particular community. And you also have to have objective signs of disinvestment in that particular area. Another component or requirement when you're establishing a CRA is that the city has to complete a housing survey. Now, this is an interesting one because CRAs historically were housing development tools. But we've seen in recent years that they're used for commercial and industrial development as well. Interestingly, the housing survey is still required even to the development at play or the desired development is commercial or industrial. And let me get to my notes to make sure I'm not skipping over things I wanted to share with you guys. So if any of this is remedial, feel free to have me skip along or go past some of this. I don't want it to be, um, boring. I know it's in the evening. Um, so getting back to CRAs, some of the characteristics of a CRA, you have to have, uh, legislation establishing the area. Um, and then set, and set those incentive parameters within that legislation. The different types of properties that are eligible for CRA are, as I mentioned, residential and commercial or industrial. There are also eligible investment thresholds that have to be met with respect to a CRA. And then there's the period of the exemption, the max term being fifteen years. The default statutory term is ten, but they can go up to fifteen. And for mega projects, they can go up to thirty. That's a pretty new statutory, um, require or allowance. Um, and then the percentage of the exemption is also included in the legislation, the default being seventy-five percent. But you have the ability to go up to a hundred percent. Um, incentives may be limited to specific types and sizes of projects, so that's basically at council's discretion, right? What type of development do you want to bring to your community when you establish a CRA? Um, and this is just something for practitioners. The incentive may apply to any qualified project completed after the legislation is enacted. So this is important because you could have a developer who's looking to, um, use a CRA. They commence development on a project, then approach the city about a CRA. It would not be eligible for the CRA, uh, uh, incentive. And then there's also a component of, of compensation that goes to overlapping subdivisions like school districts. So I mentioned the development agreement and I included the development agreement, um, in the CRA segment of this presentation. But the development agreement really is important and critical for every different type of incentive. Because really it's where the negotiation between the property owner slash developer and the, and the city or political subdivision really takes place. Um, it, it really, it's your roadmap for basically how that development is going to go. Um, and so even though you have different types of legislation that you have to adopt to create a CRA or create a TIF and then you have agreements that follow those, your development agreement is a standalone document that really happens prior to any of that. Sometimes it's happening at the same time, but it's a, it's a good practice rule of thumb to make sure that you have a development in place. Uh, as I mentioned, you're gonna have in there development plans, um, any identified infrastructure needs. That's important, important because a lot of times developers are looking for incentives to help with infrastructure that's going to support the development. Um, what incentives you're going to make available to that particular development. We talk about these as individual incentives, but almost never, um, does a project have only one incentive on it. We often see them layered into projects. Um, any city permitting and approval processes that might need to be outlined. Um, financial obligations of the developer, uh, any financial obligations that the city might be taking on. And then whatever else is important to the city. It's really your opportunity to negotiate for the development that you wanna see. And so what are school districts' rights with respect to a CRA? Well, they kind of fall into, essentially fall into two different categories. School districts have rights of notice and then they also have rights of compensation depending on the term and the threshold for that particular CRA. In terms of notice provisions, uh, there are two different statutory notice requirements. Uh, you have the forty-five day notice requirement and you have the fourteen day notice requirement with respect to our CRA. And I mention these because when you're commencing a development, these notice requirements, public hearing requirements, they really drag out the timeline for implementing a particular, uh, uh, incentive. And so it's something to think about when you're working with a developer. It's something they're always thinking about is how does this timeline affect my particular project timeline? Um, you, as I mentioned, you have approval thresholds, so school districts, if you're exceeding, uh, seventy-five percent of an abatement, they have the ability to consent to the creation of that CRA. And then in certain instances, there are also income tax sharing requirements for a CRA. So if you have a commercial industrial project and, uh, it's going to generate two million dollars or more in income tax, a portion of those income tax proceeds, um, I wouldn't say are required to go to the school district, but the statute lays out a portion that will be shared with the district. And so you get into the negotiation when you have a compensation agreement around income tax sharing. Um, what we often see is if, if a school district, uh, is, has consent rights, what's primarily at play are the property tax revenues that they're going to be foregoing by the creation of that particular incentive. So in a CRA, you are abating the, the in, the property taxes associated with the improvement value. The lion's share of those going to the school district. Usually the compensation agreement will make that school district whole in some way via the property taxes that they're foregoing as a result of that incentive. And in that negotiation, they often will give up any kind of income tax sharing rights. They also might waive the notice requirements, which is great for the developer because it speeds up the timeline for, uh, the creation of that incentive. And I mentioned here, um, does anyone have questions about the income tax sharing piece at all? No, okay. Okay, so we're ending with CRA. Any questions about CRA that I didn't answer in that segment? No, okay. So now we're gonna get into, uh, tax. Yes.
Uh, you had a bullet on, I think, the last chart about infrastructure set off. Could you?
Yes.
Elaborate on that?
Yes, I think it was on this slide, right? More? I did, okay. I'm sorry, I can't see. Um, yes, so when I mentioned the income tax sharing, under the statute, school districts are, uh, are allotted fifty percent of the income tax revenue growth. However, it says fifty percent, but there's actually a thirty-five percent set, set off of that fifty percent that the city can retain for any infrastructure that they have to build out in connection with that development. So essentially the school district is not getting the entire fifty percent. They're getting more like twenty-something percent. You're welcome. So the next incentive we're gonna talk about is the tax increment financing incentive. Um, and TIF, uh, is not an abatement. Um, it is a redirection of property taxes. So how does it work? Uh, it redirects the new tax property, I'm sorry, the new property tax revenue in connection with a new development or redevelopment. So similar to the CRA, the, the redirection of taxes. So similar to the CRA, the redirection of taxes is associated with the property taxes on that improvement value, not the base value. And what is it often used for? It's used for infrastructure improvements primarily. And in some instances, it can be used for direct private developer cost. So I mentioned that the TIF redirection of taxes is associated with the improvement value. So that would mean that any pre-existing taxes, property taxes, continue to go to the various taxing districts, including the school district. And I mentioned also here importantly that the property owner is not receiving a tax break, right? Those revenues are still coming to a TIF fund, to the city. They're paying them, but there's just an opportunity to redirect a portion of them into their project. And so what they're paying is they're called service payments in lieu of taxes or pilots. And so what are pilots? As I just mentioned, they're essentially the property tax portion assigned to the improvement value and they go into a TIF fund. So instead of going, collected by the county auditor and then being dispersed out to the different taxing districts, those particular property tax revenues are diverted into a fund called the TIF fund. They're collected in the same manner and at the same time as property taxes, they just are redirected to another fund. And as I mentioned previously, primarily used to pay for infrastructure improvements that support a development. You see here a reference to the payment of debt service. Oftentimes, we see the TIF revenues monetized. So if the city or a port authority is asked to issue municipal bonds to support a particular improvement, maybe it's a public parking garage or different sanitary sewer improvements or something with respect to that project, the city will often, or the port authority will issue municipal bonds and the TIF revenues are pledged to pay debt service on those bonds. And so here in Ohio, we have about six different types of TIFs. The most popular and the two that we'll get into today are the parcel TIF or project TIF and the incentive district TIF. So this is just a diagram that shows how the TIF works. I explained this on the previous slide, but for those who like pictures, this is really helpful. You see at the very bottom, the baseline property value. That's the pre-existing value. And then you see the improvement, which is the tax increment in orange. And then you see to the far right, the value after the termination of the TIF. And so I mention that because after the TIF is over, whatever period of time is set, those revenues are then diverted back to the taxing districts. So ultimately, the school district who's losing money potentially, depending on what the terms of the compensation agreement are, will get the benefit of those revenues after the TIF is completed.
A question.
Yes.
You said at the end of the TIF that the money could go back to the schools, but doesn't the money just go to the general fund of the city?
Correct. So yeah, so any money that's been collected during the life of the TIF that's in the fund, that would, the fund would be dissolved and those monies in that pot would go into the general fund. What I'm referring to are any future property taxes associated with that development. So as I mentioned, TIFs can be used to directly support developments and indirectly support developments. Indirectly is the primary use of TIF dollars because they're often used to finance infrastructure. So it's not directly impacting the development. It's not the actual building or facilities of the development or, as I mentioned earlier, private development costs. It's usually for a public infrastructure. But they also incentivize development, right? Because the infrastructure, and we're seeing this a lot in Ohio, is that the public infrastructure improvements and who's going to pay for those is really hamstringing a lot of different developments. So it's a really important tool and one that a lot of developers request or ask for because it helps the project pencil. As I mentioned before, it can also be used directly to support the actual development and that's when the developer himself, him or herself, can receive those dollars to go directly into their project. This slide just gives you an overview of the typical improvements we see financed with TIF revenues. As I mentioned, public infrastructure is the biggest one. Those dollars can also be used for land acquisition, demolition of existing sites, utility improvements, road, water, sewer maintenance. Can also be used to fund planning and soft costs of the developer. As I mentioned also, debt service on municipal bonds financed. And then of course, in certain instances, private development cost. So I mentioned on the previous slide, there are six different TIFs here in Ohio. This is the parcel or project TIF, a pretty popular TIF. It's composed of individual parcels. Again, TIF dollars are being used to support and finance public improvements. Important to note with respect to the parcel TIF is that the improvements financed must directly benefit the parcels that are exempted. And so that's a unique statutory requirement for parcel or project TIFs. For other different types of TIFs, the improvements just have to benefit the district generally. This particular TIF is commonly used for commercial developments and included in the definition of commercial is our multifamily apartments. And so I mentioned that as well because there's a lot of different discussion around what constitutes residential. In some instances, residential does not include apartments. Sometimes it does.
Quick question. When you say public improvements must directly benefit the parcel, so if you look at individual parcels, the requirement is that you're doing the improvement for that individual parcel and that's considered a public improvement?
Yes, yes, so long as it actually is a public improvement. And so the statute lays out what constitutes public improvements. There's a kitchen sink definition, but that can also be tailored in your legislation. There's an exhibit when you're authorizing a TIF in the legislation that spells out what the public improvements are going to be for that particular project. And then we also have the municipal urban redevelopment TIF. I won't get into this one a ton. It's another one of the six. It's often used in urban redevelopment settings. The city must be in the chain of title. That's something unique. Other TIFs don't require that. What we often will see is a property owner or developer owning the parcel, granting it or deeding it over to the city for a limited period of time, going back to the developer just so it meets that statutory requirement. The requirement is that there has to be some type of urban redevelopment going on with respect to the development. And then this particular TIF can be used to support residential development, but only if it's in a blighted area of an impacted city. And that blighted area is a determination by the Ohio Department of Development. And I highlight that because blighted area is not a requirement for all of the different types of TIFs, but it does come into play with some of them. So important to note. This is also the particular TIF that can be used to reimburse developers for private development costs. So that's why it's also very popular. And then we also have the incentive district TIF. This particular TIF allows municipalities and counties and townships also have statutory authority to use this TIF to grant TIF exemption for any improvements within the residential improvement district. The type of improvement can be residential and/or commercial in your incentive district. There are statutory criteria laid out for the parcels that are included in this TIF. It can't be more than 300 contiguous acres, so there are size limitations. They have to exhibit one or more characteristics of economic distress. And public improvements do not need to directly benefit every parcel, but must generally benefit the district as a whole. And so I mentioned distress criteria. So I want to highlight for you all some of the statutory distress criteria that are listed. So blighted area is one of them, but it doesn't have to meet that. So the statutory requirement is that the parcels to be included in the incentive district have to meet one or more. So it could be just one of these particular criteria. And as you see, there are a number of them. Meeting income, unemployment, there's a poverty test, situational distress test, and then also an improved land test.
Could you define what a distressed area is?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, there are different distress criteria. So these are some of the main distress criteria that are laid out in the statute. So one or more of these must be met. So it could be a blighted area or it could be a meeting income. It could be unemployment, poverty, it could be any one of these.
All right, I'm sorry. I guess it looked like it was circular to me with the title on that.
Yeah, I just kind of went into more detail on this previous slide. I just mentioned distress characteristics since I wanted to lay out for council members what those distress characteristics can look like. You're welcome. And the city engineer also has to create an economic development plan that essentially states that the current infrastructure is inadequate to serve that particular development and district. And there's a process for creation. I won't really bore you with all of the details of what the process is for creating an incentive district TIF, but I do lay it out here for your education. Happy to go into deeper dive if you'd like. But it's important to note that there are different time requirements associated with establishing an incentive district TIF. Different notice requirements that go out to school districts, go out to counties, public hearings, depending on the property owner or property owners at play, and also affected property owners that are going to be next to that particular TIF district. Okay, so key takeaways for the incentive district TIF. The max term statutorily laid out is 10 years, but it can go up to 30 years with school district approval. And the max percentage is, I'm sorry, let me renote that. It's 10 years, it can go up to 30 years. It's percentage-wise statutorily is defaulted at 75%. It can go up to 100% with school district approval. And then the use of TIF revenues are often used, as I mentioned, for infrastructure improvements and private developer costs. And council member farmer, to your earlier point, the surplus remaining in the fund upon dissolution of the fund is transferred to the city's general fund.
Another question for you. What is the motivation for these being so long, for 30 years? I mean, that's like a generational kind of thing.
Yeah, very good point. Oftentimes, as I mentioned earlier, these incentives are monetized by a developer. And so what they're doing is they'll engage in a TIF model to see how much revenue will be generated by this particular TIF for this project. And they'll model out that anticipated revenue and then funnel that back into their project to make the project pencil. So the term is often based on whatever the financial needs are, whatever gap funding there is for that particular project. Sometimes it could also be that if municipal bonds are going to be issued to finance infrastructure improvements, whatever the lifecycle of those bonds are might be connected to the term of the particular TIF. And so if, let's say you go out, let's say you're doing public infrastructure for a development. Oftentimes, public infrastructure improvements have a useful life of 25 years or 30 years. If the TIF revenues are being pledged to pay debt service on those bonds, you would want the TIF revenues to stay intact for the life of those bonds.
What if in your agreement, there's a cap on the amount of infrastructure you could pay? And I'd say in the 30 years, it gets paid off by like year 15. So what happens between years 15 and 30 with these pilot payments?
Yeah, so if you have, if you want a cap in your development agreement, if you want to cap the number of years that the development is receiving, the benefit of those TIF dollars?
I'm talking about capping the amount of infrastructure cost reimbursed, as an example.
Yeah, you can do that. So you can establish a TIF and in that development agreement, you could say, you know, this portion of the TIF revenue is going to be used to support infrastructure costs and we're going to cap it at X. You could totally do that. And if you're still collecting TIF revenue, let's say you meet that particular cap and the term of the TIF is still in place and you're still collecting TIF revenue, then those monies, excuse me, are being bankrolled into the TIF fund and then can be used by the city to support other types of infrastructure that you might decide to support.
Within that TIF district, correct?
Well, you could, when you dissolve the TIF, you could then use those monies, transfer them to the general fund and use those for different improvements across the city, throughout the city.
How would you terminate a TIF fund or a TIF agreement? You just basically have all the parties agree that we can end it?
Well, I would say if you're going to, we're getting into negotiation of terms, but let's say you have a TIF agreement and your goal and desire is to cap the amount of TIF revenues that are going to be used to support a particular development, you could have a trigger in that TIF agreement that states when this threshold is met, the TIF agreement is hereby dissolved, right? It hereby terminates. And then you could say, any monies remaining in the TIF fund are hereby transferred to the general fund. Or you could say that once you meet that cap, then any additional revenues that go into the TIF fund, if the TIF is still in place, are going to be used for X, something completely different. So you can really spell that out in your development agreement or your TIF agreement. You're welcome. And so what are school districts' rights under TIFs? You also have notice and compensation rights. So again, you have the 14 and 45-day notice requirements. You have, as I mentioned, the statutory default term of 10 years and the statutory default percentage of 75%. You also have income tax sharing rights, again, similar to CRA. In this case, if you're dealing with a commercial or industrial TIF project, the income tax revenues only have to be $1 million. So for CRA, it's $2 million, for TIF, it's $1 million. And similar rights for school districts, they have a right to 50% of that income tax, but again, it's offset for any infrastructure improvements that the city might need to make. Any questions about rights? Nope? Okay. So big picture issues, and these are things for cities to think about when they're considering a TIF, approached by a developer for a TIF. How will the TIF benefit the TIFing jurisdiction, right? Is this a development that the city wants to see come to fruition? How aggressive will the TIFing jurisdiction be in defining the public infrastructure to be financed with the TIF revenues? So you have a lot of control over determining what you want to finance and where you want to see those monies go. What would be the public's perception of the TIF? That's a big one for communities, right? You have different reactions in different communities to TIFs. What would be the public's perception to that particular development? Is it a development that your residents and constituents want to see come or is it one that they don't want to see come? Things for council members to consider and think about. How will the TIF impact the school district? We have, we work with municipalities that have great relationships with their school districts and they collaborate around the use of incentives so that it's not an adversarial interaction. I personally think that's the best approach because you're going to have different developers and developments coming, approaching you. And each time, depending on what they're asking for, you're going to have to engage with your school district around that. So if you can have an amicable working relationship, I think that's great. And then also, how will the TIF impact other taxing entities? Just things to consider and think through with your council as you're approached or thinking about a TIF. And then I want to quickly hit on a couple of other tools. I mentioned the new community authority at the beginning and also that this is probably one of the most popular tools, or I'd say tools increasing in popularity at the most rapid pace. And the reason for that is that it is a self-assessed charge. So it doesn't impact your property taxes, it doesn't impact your income taxes. There's no income tax sharing requirement if you reach certain thresholds. It's essentially an entirely new revenue stream and it's oftentimes developer-driven. So how is an NCA established? Well, there's of course authorizing legislation, there's always legislation. But the property owner or developer will approach the city and say, hey, I have this project. I'd like to establish a new community authority on this particular, on these particular parcels or this project site. And there is a governing body that's appointed, the Board of Trustees, usually seven members, four appointed by the organizational board. The organizational board would be city council. And then three appointed by the developer that essentially govern that NCA. The cool things about NCAs are that they have the ability to levy and collect a charge independent of any taxes and they also have the ability to issue municipal bonds. And so that's a great tool and opportunity because oftentimes, cities, port authorities, other political subdivisions are other political subdivisions are leaned on to support and finance infrastructure by issuing debt via their bond authority. This alleviates that. How is the NCA charge usually levied? It can be levied with respect to bet taxes. If there's a hotel, the NCA could be levied with respect to real property taxes, sales taxes, or income tax on the residents, or any combination thereof. And what can a charge be used to finance? Public infrastructure. It can be used to pay debt service on bonds that are financing public infrastructure. And it can also be layered in with other incentives like TIF and/or CRA. So putting it all together, going back to your development agreement, you want to model out your expectations. So for development, you know, what are the infrastructure needs? What is the revenue of the TIF that could be generated? What's the revenue of an NCA, if that's at play to be generated? What's the impact of a CRA? What are the pilot payments going to be to school districts? If they're going to be made whole, if there's some kind of compensation agreement in play? And again, a lot of that is ironed out in your development agreement. And then the last tool I'll mention is special assessments, very similar to NCA's, entirely separate revenue stream. They're not affecting your property taxes or your income taxes. They are collected in the same manner as property taxes, but they are used to support some particular infrastructure improvement. Very common, public infrastructure improvements that are financed with special assessments. I won't bore you with the terms, but one of the oldest tools in the book, doesn't affect your tax base. I'll lay out here for you all the procedural steps for establishing a special assessment. It's somewhat time-intensive. There are, again, there are notice requirements, hearing requirements, et cetera. And then I wanted to quickly hit on for you all a particular project that's before council, or will be coming before council, I believe, for Hunter's Path, and the options for that particular project. And so the two options that we as council have been privy to are the incentive district TIF, and then more recently, discussions of a CRA for that particular project. And so with that, I will open it up to council for questions or comments.
Any questions or comments?
For the CRA, it says ability to issue municipal bonds. That board that's created has the ability to issue municipal bonds, or the developer is able to without that board?
For the NCA?
Mm-hmm.
That's the board, yeah. So what, so the developer or property owner would approach the city and ask for the creation of an NCA on that particular project site. And the legislative authority, i.e. the city, would have to grant that approval. And once that approval is granted, a board of trustees would be appointed, and the city would have four appointees to that NCA board. So essentially, the city would have the majority on that particular board.
And then once that would be created, that board of trustees has the ability to issue the municipal bonds without a council's approval?
That's correct. And if you think about it, the city has four trustees on the board, so they're essentially the city's representative. So those bonds wouldn't get approved without city support.
Okay, interesting.
So use of what we've seen.
How would that affect, how would that affect outlooks for the finance department? I mean, does that debt then show on the city? No, that's just for that development?
That's correct. So the NCA is a separate standalone taxing authority, political subdivision, so it does not impact the city's debt capacity or their rating, et cetera.
So let's just say then, a development were to not be successful and fail, and the ability to collect on the debts doesn't exist, then what happens?
Can you walk me through that scenario? So the NCA issues bonds?
The housing development fails, and then what?
So were bonds issued on that particular housing development?
Yeah.
Okay, so you have an NCA in place, and you have a housing development. And in this case, bonds were issued by the NCA, and an NCA charge was pledged as security to pay debt service on those bonds. So if, when you say the housing development fails, I guess what does that, what does that mean? Because there's a legal requirement to levy a charge on the property owners within that NCA to pay debt service on those bonds.
So the municipal bonds that can be taken can only be in excess of what is levied and collected?
Well, so if you're, so if the NCA was going to issue bonds for a housing development, they would have to pledge as, as security, a sufficient revenue stream. So what you might have is, if they're going to pay debt service from an NCA charge alone, then the NCA charge to property owners would have to be sufficient to pay debt service. I can tell you, I've never seen bonds issued where the only source of security pledged is an NCA charge. You often see it layered in. So you would, you might see TIF revenues, or let's say, let's use a parking facility. Let's say the NCA decides they're going to issue municipal bonds to build out a parking facility, and they issue bonds for that. You might see parking revenues as the first line of revenue pledged to pay debt service. You might then see those parking revenues backed by TIF revenues. And then if you need a further backing, you might then see it backstopped by an NCA charge that can be levied. And then with NCA charges, you know, you can draft the documents where they will levy the NCA charge sufficient to pay whatever is left over in terms of debt service on those bonds.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just, I was only asking because on page 40, you had lists, or not you, but it's listed on here as an option.
Yeah.
So I'm not familiar with this, so that explanation is helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the, is, I'm sorry, is the, in an NCA, I think I'm correct on this, the board would be responsible for the collections. Is that right?
Yes. So the board would meet annually, they have an organizational meeting annually, and at that organizational meeting, they would adopt and approve a budget for the NCA for the following year. They would also adopt authorizing legislation certifying whatever NCA charge is necessary to be collected for that following year, and a number of other housekeeping resolutions.
Anything else?
Kevin, this might be a question. I think you had mentioned we do have a CRA.
Yeah, North Clayton Community Authority, I sit on that. It's kind of unique because the developer went bankrupt, they didn't build all the houses. So the developer's agreement was voided. So the city contracted with the community authority just to maintain the common spaces out there. So that's what the North Clayton Community Authority is. We assess $600 a year fee to residential, $650 to commercial, and it uses to maintain the grass cutting, the plowing of the alleys, since that's not city roadways, and just maintain the common areas. That's what, that's what the new North Clayton Community Authority turned into out there.
But when it was started, it was a regular TIF, and then it failed and became a CRA?
It just got the TIF, and then, yeah, it was, the developer created this with Montgomery County and the city to create the North Clayton Community Authority. You know, the developer sat on the board, and there's, it's set out in the bylaws, depending on how many houses are on there, how many residents sit on the board, and we had a city representative. So right now, there's no developer representative, there's no developer, so mainly it's me and residents.
And I can tell you, procedurally, once the board approves the authorizing legislation for the NCA charts that will be collected the following year, there are two different mechanisms for collecting that. You can go ahead and certify it to the county auditor for collection with your property taxes, or you could independently collect it. What I would say is that most NCA's use the county auditor process. And the reason for that is, the benefit is that if there's a delinquency, you have the benefit of the tax foreclosure that you can exercise.
Anything else?
Could we go back to chart 17? All right, I just wanted to clarify, for that baseline property value, that the property tax on that is not redirected.
That's correct.
So let's say, for example, and correct me if I'm wrong as I follow this trail here. So let's say we're going to build a development on some farmland. So whatever that property tax is for that farmland, that is what's going to continue to be paid like it was farmland for the duration of the TIF.
That's correct.
Okay.
And whatever improves, so obviously, you know, there's reappraisals that occur.
It would grow over time as if it was being reappraised by anything else.
That's correct.
But then the improvement, I guess the question improvement is, help me back up a little bit. So that payment in lieu of, the property tax that they would pay would be the sum of what they pay in the baseline property tax plus whatever would go to the TIF fund from the improvement?
That's correct.
Okay. So the improvement out of that section of money, what cannot be redirected to the TIF fund? Is there anything that can't be redirected that still has to be paid, like debt or bond?
Well, so if you have voter-approved bonds, that's a separate levy of property taxes to pay debt service on those bonds. So property owners are assessed, whatever is, when you have voter-approved bonds, you have to levy whatever property taxes, tax is necessary to pay debt service on those bonds. Very, completely separate from the improvement value with respect to the development going into the TIF fund.
Okay, all right, so debt is considered separate from improvement?
That's correct.
Okay.
So just to dig deeper into that, the property owner that has this particular development, their base value, they're going to levy whatever is necessary to pay debt service on those bonds on that base value?
So what I'm hearing is, correct me if I'm wrong, so what gets redirected for the increment would include county general fund, city, police, fire, EMS, levies, or property tax?
Yes, they're, yes, but they're voter-approved property taxes as well.
Right, but those are redirected to this TIF fund, but the baseline will still pay towards police and fire like it normally would?
That's correct. And I have to dig into that and to see if there are certain levies that have different requirements with respect to how TIF revenues are used. Off the top, council member, I can't answer that question. I think there are nuances with different types of levies.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, great, well, thank you.
You're very welcome. Easy crowd.
Anything else, Kevin? You good?
Okay, well, thank you so much for coming in and educating us a little bit more on these programs, and thanks for all the work.
You're welcome, thank you. If you have questions, please feel free to reach out.
Okay, that concludes our workshop for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn the workshop?
Don't move.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Merkel, seconded by Mr. Gorman. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the workshop is adjourned, and we are slated to start at 7:30. It's about 10 minutes, so just please relax, and we'll start right at 7:30. Thank you.